Second hearing we've had related to the 2021 budget for Hamilton County. Our first hearing was during one of our regular meetings. And as always, we like to invite the public in and make it as accessible as possible by having an evening meeting. This is untraditional because we're not together in person. But thank you to those who could join virtually, and we look forward to hearing from you. So before we get to the public comment, the administrator would like to walk through kind of a brief synopsis of the budget. We have already seen this presentation, but we thought probably we have folks on that have not seen it. So we'd like to go through it briefly, and then we will go to public comments. So Commissioner Sumner Odumas, anything to add before we go to Jeff?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you, commissioners, and I will, because I know while we may have some folks that have not seen the presentation, I know this will be really the third time that we've walked through this. So I will do my best.
Never gets old, Jeff. Never gets old.
That's right. I will do my best to keep this very brief. And so I'm going to share my screen now. Okay, can folks see that yet?
Yes.
Yes.
So again, this is the public hearing for the administrator's recommended 2021 budget. And as we always do at this time, we just say that this is not the budget yet that the board has passed. This is just the administration's recommendation to the board. And so we want to walk through just some of the highlights of the budget as recommended. First of all, some background. This is the general fund budget. This is the primary operating fund of the county. It supports a lot of the mandated services of county government, elections, 911, the courts, the justice center and jail, the sheriff's office, things like the coroner's office and crime lab, all of our development, most of our development services departments, the offices of the treasurer, most of the offices, the treasurer, the recorder, the auditor. So a lot of the basic functions of county government are contained within the general fund. I bring that up because when people think of the work of the county, the county's work extends across a huge number of areas. And many of those things are not related to the general fund budget. All of our voted property tax levies, whether it's children's services or senior services, even things like the zoo, developmental disability services, those are not the general fund. Very important work of the county, but it's not the county's general fund. The metropolitan sewer district, not the county's general fund. Job and family services, extremely important work of the county, but those are separate restricted funds. And there's over 80 restricted funds in the county that are off of the general fund that are very important in and of their own right. But this, what we're talking about today is the county's primary operating fund, which is the county general fund. The budget goals this year were largely to stabilize the financial condition of the county in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. We also wanted to ensure that as we did that, that we addressed the board's 2021 and 2022 policy agenda as passed. We wanted to enhance some of our internal operating capabilities, allow for prudent infrastructure investment, and address our human capital strategy. In terms of stabilizing the county's financial condition, the budget is balanced at $290.7 million. That's an increase of around $13.8 million from 2020. It does incorporate the additional half year of the quarter cent sales tax that rolled off from Union Terminal. So in 2019, we saw six months of that quarter cent sales tax come in in 2019. 2020 will be the first year where we actually see the entire full 12 months of that additional quarter cent, which is largely responsible for some of the increase in the budget. We are projecting a fund balance of 44.5 million or 16.1% of the 2020 budget. It was 36 million at the end of 2019, so we are anticipating adding to reserves. A little bit of detail on the revenue, just for folks who may be watching, just for general interest. Sales tax makes up by far our largest revenue stream in the 2021 recommended budget at roughly 122.8 million or 42%, roughly 42% of the county's budget. But you can see we have a relatively diverse revenue stream. Everything from service fees on or fees on services that we provide throughout the county. The property tax is around 40 million. We get revenue from various intergovernmental sources. We also get revenue from things like court fines and interest on idle investments, as well as things like building permit fees. So that's where the money comes from. In terms of where it goes, the vast majority of the general fund budget goes to issues of public safety and criminal justice. So over 75% of our general fund budget is allocated for those purposes. And the remainder then is for general government purposes. We talked about things like the auditor, the treasurer, the recorder, many of our land development operations, elections, that type of thing. And we also have a much smaller portion that goes towards things like public works. You can see debt service. I want to focus a little bit on debt service at 6.4 million. So a fairly manageable slice of the county's budget goes for debt service, which we've tried to bring that down over the years, and then economic development and social services. Little bit about where the county's budget has been. This is a graph that the commission was well attuned to over the past several years that highlighted our structural imbalance prior to the incorporation of the additional quarter cent sales tax. This is what we were anticipating for 2021 and beyond in terms of the diversion between revenues and expenses, which obviously the math here just wouldn't have worked and would have led the county to a position of very quickly depleting reserves, massively cutting services, and looking prospectively at some level of fiscal emergency had the issue not been addressed. The 2021 recommended budget has us on a much more sustainable path. I will remark, however, that while we are on a sustainable path, there are risks associated with this budget. I'll get to those in a little bit. But I also want to remark that even with the more positive budgetary review, there are still some things in this budget that the board has wanted to do and wanted to address that we are not able to, given the fact that our revenues are still slightly depressed from the COVID pandemic. We have, while sales tax did not take the hit that we thought it would, it still did take a hit. Some of our other revenue sources are also reduced through the COVID pandemic for interest, or for example, interest earnings. We are projecting well down from this year and last year, largely because of the reduced interest rate environment in the economy. So while we are showing a relatively structurally balanced and relatively sound five-year plan, there are still some things in here that the board has said that it has wanted to do that are not accommodated for in this budget. Some of the human capital issues that we wanted to address, some of the more treatment-related issues that we wanted to address. We have not formally budgeted into the operating budget at this time. The budget, some of the strategies that we've used. We're going to obviously continue on a year in and year out basis to ensure that we are constantly talking with and working with all the departments and elected officials in the county to make sure that we are really putting downward pressure on the general fund spend through these departments. And John Brugan, the Budget Office, does a fantastic job of working with our departments, again, board departments and independently elected alike, to make sure that we are truly doing those things that we need to do, not necessarily all those things that we want to do, because there's always going to be more wants than need. In this year's budget, we have used the CARES Act to support some of our public safety levy costs, eliminating a potential cost to the general fund. We want to maintain a prudent general fund reserve. And we're also looking to establish a budget stabilization fund for our general fund reserve to help modulate or even out modulations in future revenue swings, as well as to help some of those restricted funds that in the future may continually be impacted through the economy, especially through COVID. I do want to hit very briefly on a couple of board policy agenda items that I know were important to the board as we got into the budget. The establishing a sustainable public safety model, making sure that we are expanding our commitment to equity and inclusion, and investing in community development and revitalization. So in terms of the public safety model, there is a lot of items in this budget where I think the commission has said very directly, we want, and this is a partnership with the courts, with the prosecutor, with the sheriff, with the coroner, all the various entities in the county that are responsible for delivering criminal justice and public safety services. I think the commission, through its budget, is indicating that it wants to work with all of these entities to make sure that they have the tools to ensure that we have a public safety model that is built on preventing recidivism, promoting treatment, and promoting reentry, as opposed to simply incarceration. We know that we have had a lot of partnerships with the courts and the sheriff and the prosecutor on these issues in the past. And the board has said through its budget it wants to prioritize these. So everything from the build-out of the 90 treatment beds at the justice center, completion of the crime lab, continuing funding for the Community Alternative Sentencing Center, expanding dollars for remote monitoring technologies, expanding QRT, Quick Response Team, operations as it relates to overdose issues in the community. There's a lot of stuff in this budget that promote that type of sustainable public safety model. Two other things I just wanted to hit on real quick is the reduction of the 911 detail rate to $5, which once, assuming the board passes this budget, that will complete the reduction of our detail rate from what at one time been in the $20 range, higher than 20, down to $5 in total, from where we were at $16 most recently when we started to bring this down. We will be, on an annual basis, communities will be saving over $3 million in total in their public safety budgets, which is, and we will have taken a big step towards reducing the fragmentation pressures in the community as it relates to our 911 and emergency communication services. So that was a major policy priority of the board. We also are partnering with the sheriff's office on funding a gun violence reduction pilot program in Lincoln Heights, where the county is committing some of that matching funds, and the sheriff's office applied for and received a federal grant, and that will occur over a three-year period. Enhancing our equity and inclusion efforts. The board has been very deliberate about making sure that we are expanding and really leveraging the work of our Office of Inclusion and Diversity, which is now known as the Department of Economic Equity and Inclusion, I believe. Economic diversity, I always get.
Economic inclusion and equity.
I'm sorry?
It's economic inclusion and equity.
Oh, I thought that's what I said. Okay, I'm sorry. Economic inclusion and equity. I thought that's what, I apologize. But wanting to expand the work of that office to not just focus simply on the internal work of the county, which is very important in and of its own right, making sure that departments are doing everything they can to utilize MBEs, WBEs, small businesses in their purchasing operations, but to really make sure that we are going out into the community and making sure that we're leveraging this department to connect the work, connect these vulnerable and marginalized populations to the work of the county. And that's what we're going to have the department focus on moving forward. We've got a lot of things planned for this department in 2021, including launching an economic disparity study. We are launching, as funded through the Department of Job and Family Services, the Office of Family Voice. And we have also in this budget the funding of training efforts within the sheriff's office that for folks that tuned into the staff meeting on Tuesday, heard Major Price talk about a lot of the active bystander training that the sheriff has committed to and moving forward with those efforts, which is, will be a tremendous thing, not just for the sheriff's office, but for the community as well. Investing in community revitalization efforts. The, I think the board has said through its policy agenda that we recognize as a first-rings suburban community that we face a lot of different challenges. Again, at the staff meeting on Tuesday, the board heard about the port site readiness program and the challenges that an urban-built-out county faces in terms of attracting jobs and investment and competing against some of our suburban counterparts in other counties. So this budget does contain a $1.5 million grant for community development or revitalization efforts. That grant would be prioritized on an annual basis by the Board of County Commissioners. The budget also contains $2 million for site readiness activities to attract jobs and also contains the addition, or the re-addition, of a senior staff person at the county to help coordinate our economic development efforts on an annual basis. We had that position at one time, lost it. That position is now restored in this recommended budget. I'm just going to walk through some of these next slides very quickly. No organization can succeed without making sure that its internal operations are strong. And we're starting to take some steps in this recommended budget to re-strengthen some of those internal fibers that had weakened over the years as the county's budget was in annual jeopardy. Everything from our IT systems that we want to take a very hard look at in 2021. Some of that's going to be doing some study work and planning. Some of it's going to be very direct work, such as transitioning our email systems, looking at our procurement operations on a holistic level, restoring some of our labor relations work, making sure that we have an adequate records management system to coordinate the work between the courts and the sheriff's office, and just restoring some of our basic facility services. The board, I know, has been, over the years, very attuned to the fact that we have, in addition to our internal services, that we have been lacking in investment in our infrastructure, our buildings that have hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred investment or deferred capital maintenance. This budget includes 6.5 million for critical capital projects, such as things like justice center elevators and fire alarm systems and HVAC systems throughout our buildings. We also have $7.6 million in energy conservation projects backed by energy savings in this budget. And we've also started, again, to invest in our facilities, staff in our facilities department, to ensure that they have the dollars they need to make proactive fixes to problems, as opposed to simply coming back to the board when something breaks, which had been the strategy for several years, but is simply not sustainable. We also have, in this budget, the continuation of our master planning efforts, especially as we are starting to, some of our staff is now working remotely, and some of those relationships may continue on permanently, where we're going to have staff, more so than maybe we ever contemplated, working remotely or outside of the office for a significant period of time, if not permanently. So we want to look at how we might be able to reduce our building footprint or footprint within buildings because of that dynamic. In terms of the human capital strategy, the budget does contemplate a 3% general wage adjustment. We have a percentage in here for payment to employees who had been furloughed during 2020. It continues our health benefits, our employee health clinic. We also establish an employee development fund within this budget. I talked about budget risks. And the, every budget includes risks. This one in particular, the main risk in this budget is the path of the pandemic and the economy. And I think we're all hopeful that as the vaccine starts to get rolled out, that the economy, that as the health of the country improves, the health of the economy will quickly follow. If that does not happen, if there's a glitch in that, if there's some sort of additional downturn, especially one that is more consistent with what we've seen in past downturns that impact to a greater degree things like sales tax, property taxes, et cetera, that could derail the more structurally balanced plan that I showed you a little bit earlier. Health of restricted funds. We have a lot of restricted funds in the county, as we mentioned, levy funds, other types of funds that house very significant board policy priorities. And the general fund, where necessary, has at times subsidized some of those funds when necessary. The health of those restricted funds, largely because of COVID and the economy, et cetera, will be something that we will have to watch for, as well as other operational issues throughout the county, including things like compensation disparities, to the degree that we cannot yet sustainably address issues of market compensation with our workforce on a holistic level. We're going to continue to see employees leave for other organizations. And typically, when that happens, it's some of the most valuable employees who take institutional knowledge out with them, and we have to pay to get that back. So there's a lot of different operational things that could potentially risk this budget as well. But in summary, the budget is structurally balanced. The five-year plan, again, absent those risks, does show a sustainable fiscal path. The fund balance is healthy and exceeds GFOA recommended standards at this point. And we are able to show a budget that allows us to make some investments to improve the organization and the community. And as I close, I would just like to thank all the county staff, all the department heads, elected officials, the board, for their policy guidance in setting the baseline for this budget. And most directly, John Brugan, our Assistant County Administrator for Budget and Finance, as well as his staff for all of their work in pulling this together. Madam President, with that, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I was also going to thank the staff, yourself included, and John, and Holly, and the rest of the budget staff for so much hard work in a really challenging year to put this budget together. It's stable, it's forward-thinking, it's responsive to the policy objectives of the board and the community. So I think we're all very grateful for all the work that has been put into this. For the folks that are on the meeting, the three commissioners have weighed in with some ideas related to the budget that were not addressed, some other thoughts that we had. And so we have offered memos to the county administrator and to one another related to those items. I don't know that commissioners, I don't know if we want to go into those, but if we don't, then we could go straight to the public and start the public comment portion of the meeting.
Commissioners, I have attached both of the memos that I've received from yourself and Commissioner Sumner Odumas. Those are attached to Jeff's PowerPoint.
Oh, thank you.
If that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. I have no problem. Go straight to the public. I have no problem with that.
I prefer to hear from the public.
All right. So Bridget, I believe, is going to put up a slide and explain how this is going to work so that we can hear people. So, yes, go ahead.
So we have, we're streaming online on YouTube and Facebook. But if you would like to participate and speak to the Board of County Commissioners, you can go to hamiltoncountyohio.gov and go to the calendar and join our Zoom. Right now, our online participants, their camera's off and they are muted, but they're using the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen. And then we'll call on them and unmute them, and they'll have to unmute themselves when prompted. There's also telephone login for folks who want to use their phones. And to raise your hand using your phone, you dial star nine and also star six to unmute when prompted.
Madam President, if I could, just very quickly, before you call the first speaker, when I checked out the comments in the chat function, I saw that someone was asking me to put the slides in full screen mode. So I apologize, I wasn't doing that. There was a reason for that. Those past efforts to do that on my particular computer resulted in the computer locking up. So I didn't want that to happen during the presentation. But what I will do is immediately following the meeting, we will get the slides onto our website so that people can view them at their leisure. But I apologize for not seeing that and acknowledging it in advance.
Okay. And also a thank you to those that participated in our last public hearing, members of the public that came forward. We appreciate that. All right, Bridget, I think we're ready to go with the first person.
Yeah, Laurel Nelson had her hand up first. She is unmuted on my end. Laurel, if you could unmute yourself, you have the pleasure of the board for two minutes.
Thank you, Bridget. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Thank you, Bridget. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Laurel Nelson. I'm the CEO for the Center for Respite Care in Over the Rhine. Previously, we were in Avondale. We serve people who are experiencing homelessness, who are ill and need short-term care that does not necessarily require hospitalization, but fails to meet the criteria for stays in shelter. Our services are short-term. In normal times, they're short-term. So anywhere from 30 to 45 days normally. And then we help with permanent placement beyond that. And we resolve the medical issues that brought them to us. I wrote to each of you last week to review our, some of our key concerns that we're having right now. And thank you for receiving that letter. Just a couple of things that, beyond the letter, that I'd like to share with you. As being a licensed facility in the state of Ohio for assisted living, due to the pandemic, we were required to reduce our capacity to allow for quarantine space. And of course, we were happy to do so and to comply, because that is very important. Through the course of this past nine months, we've reduced our capacity even further to allow for safety measures. So just really quickly, we have a capacity of 20 individuals that we can house at any one time. We've reduced that to 10 so that everyone has their own space, their own bedroom, so that we are maintaining semi-quarantine and social distancing for these folks. So far, we've managed to keep all of our residents very safe and all of our staff employed. We haven't incurred major expense relevant to the pandemic. But the problem is that our revenue has really been impacted by the pandemic and by our reduction in capacity. And unfortunately, our attempts to shore some of that revenue loss up have failed because we are really falling through the cracks for CARES Act's funding, because we have not had to really modify our operation. We haven't had to employ additional staff. We haven't had to retrofit any of our facility to stay safe, which is, what we're finding is very typical for some of those requests. So I am here today to ask that if you would consider the Center for Respite Care for funding while you were deliberating your budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask a question to Laurel?
Sure.
When you talk about your revenue has decreased, the items that you provide for your clients that are in respite care, are you still able to provide as many items as you would normally do? Has that impacted your ability to purchase supplies, other than the, of course, PPEs and things like that? But just the general supplies? Has there been any lack?
No, there hasn't been. We've been pretty seamless with what we've been able to provide. And a lot of that is from the generosity of our volunteers and our donors have made sure that we've had what we've needed.
So as you look at funding, what specifically are you thinking that funding would be used for, your funding?
So where we're falling short because of our capacity. So we do get a significant amount of funding from the hospitals and also from the senior services tax levy, but we're at half capacity.
Capacity, mhm. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Patrick Ober.
Oh, hold on just one moment. Commissioner Parks?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Nelson, if you don't mind. So at half capacity, which of course affects your bottom line, your, you know, ability to bill. So it occurs to me that you are affected by the coronavirus, you know, by the pandemic, because now you are at half capacity, which also cuts your revenue in half. So can, so where, what part falls through the crack that you referred to?
So specifically with our attempts to get CARES Act funding, what we're finding in the several attempts that we've made is that the funding can be accessed if we've had to alter our facility. So if we've had to do things like put up Plexiglas partitions or, you know, in some of our partners in the community, they've had to utilize like hotel space or additional space. We haven't had to do any of that. So what's happening, and I will say, we don't bill. All of our services are provided free of charge to the individuals that access them. So we're receiving funding from the tax levy based on the census and based on the demographic.
Oh, not based upon the occupancy?
Yes, based on occupancy, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, for example, UCMC provides a flat rate funding for every admission. We're being impacted by that because, A, we cannot take people, and B, because they're not really sending us anyone because that is not their focus right now in the hospitals, clearly.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patrick Ober with CIO. Patrick, I have unmuted you on my end. If you can unmute on yours.
Yes, thank you, Bridget.
Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Patrick Ober. I am the Disability Rights and Advocacy Specialist for the Center for Independent Living Options, also known as Silo here in Cincinnati. We are located in Mount Auburn and are a nonprofit organization with a federal mandate that at least 51% of our staff be an individual with a disability. Silo provides five core services and supports to help people with disabilities live independent and inclusive lives in their community. Those services include advocacy, independent living skills, peer support, youth and institutional transition services, and information and referral services. We also provide a permanent supportive housing program and personal care assistance coordination. As a supporting member of the Human Services Chamber, and I believe you heard from Gina Marsh at our earlier meeting last week, I am here today to support the call to invest a portion of this year's general fund budget in human services. People with disabilities have been massively affected by COVID-19. Many individuals rely on affordable housing, food assistance, and direct support services in order to live on their own. For many, these services and supports are the difference between independent living and being unnecessarily forced either into homelessness or into assisted living or nursing facilities in order to receive the supports necessary. As we've seen this year, not only are such facilities undesirable for many, they are downright dangerous to their health. With support from the county, our organization would be able to ensure that affordable housing options, employment opportunities, and support services for people with disabilities remain available. As a county, we believe that investing in human services would further the county's policy agenda of equity, inclusion, and community development. Human services funding provides critical supports for people with disabilities trying to live fulfilling and independent lives, just like everyone else in society. The Center for Independent Living Options strongly supports the call for human services funding in the county budget. Providing such funding can be a cost-effective and proactive way the county can show its citizens that it cares about underserved populations and supports independent and inclusive living for everyone. So I thank you for giving me the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we have Debbie Brooks. Debbie, you are unmuted on my end.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I am Executive Vice President, YWCA Greater Cincinnati. YWCA is a member of the Human Service Chamber, and I'm here to urge you to include funding for human services in this year's general fund budget. YWCA is the primary provider of domestic violence shelter and housing in Hamilton County. And in addition to community-based services, we provide vital shelter to survivors and their children. Our goal is to promote safety and healing from the trauma of abuse and help families achieve self-sufficiency. As you know, as I spoke in an earlier meeting, in March, we moved all of our shelter residents into hotels to ensure the health and safety of both the families we serve and our staff. The agency's incurred an additional $85,000 monthly in expenses. We have, though, been able to exceed our previous maximum capacity, housing more families, and we've had only one client test positive. In this new COVID environment, we cannot return to our shelter safely. And a new model of single-room occupancy sheltering, where families have their own bathrooms and living space, is really required long-term. We fully intend to secure a different facility so we can reduce trauma, keep families safe, and reduce transmission. This will require additional ongoing operating expense, but it will pay off, resulting in reduced community spread, lowered medical costs, and really meet the needs of shelter for domestic violence survivors. As we all know, domestic violence incidents have escalated since COVID and continue to be on the rise, only exacerbated by job loss, evictions, and poverty. With the support from the county, our organization would be able to make this a reality. Everyone in our community really benefits when we provide the basic need of safety and a pathway away from abuse to self-sufficiency. The time is really now for our county to fund vital human services. And if we're going to be able to realize an economic recovery for all our citizens, this is a pathway there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Matt. Matt, go ahead and unmute yourself. Matt, you might be still muted. And you just need to unmute on your end. Matt, I don't know if he can actually do that. So we did have a question in the chat from Thomas Perry. Thomas, would you like to address the board and address your comments in the chat yourself? You're unmuted on my end.
Yeah, thank you so much. Hi, commissioners. This is Tom Perry with the city of Norwood. I just wanted to let you all know, we have a new administration, and we've had a problem that has plagued our community for many years on Elm Avenue in Norwood. We've had sanitary sewers backing up into the street and destroying a lot of people's homes. It's about a $6 million fix, and, you know, we're a city with a very tight budget. And we've tried to talk with MSD about it, the folks there. Sometimes their initial reaction is more like, well, we could treat it as like it's a new development. You know, our thought is, all those houses have been there since 1915, you know, 1920. So it's kind of silly to call it a new development. But we have a new administration that really wants to take things seriously there. Again, $6 million for us is, I think, like a third or a fourth of our budget for a year. So it's a huge, huge issue. The residents have suffered for a really, really long time. If there's any way that we can partner with the county to alleviate this issue, it would be greatly appreciated. I also wanted to note that Councilman Chris Kelch is on this call. This flooding is occurring in his ward, so I would like to give him a quick second to speak as well.
Yeah, I think I'm unmuted. Yeah, so my name is Chris Kelch. I'm a current council member for Ward One here in the city of Norwood. This issue, Mr. Perry did a very nice job at hitting on. And I think a lot of you guys might remember hearing news stories about kind of the floods we had a couple of years ago. And there's a lot of claims filed with MSD from residents about, you know, some of the sewage coming back up into their basements. And it was kind of really bad. A lot of people lost a lot of things during that storm. And these people are on Elm, every time it rains now, there's overland flooding. Theirs basements are getting flooded and with some of the sewage waste and all that coming back up through their basements, so it's really recurring. So every year, multiple times a year, we have a lot of residents that have a lot of damage, a lot of things they have to replace in their houses. And we have a lot of elderly people over there, too, that are really struggling with this, that have been there for years and unfortunately been dealing with these issues for many years. And another thing Mr. Perry hit on is, the administration we have now, they're really serious about getting things done for the betterment of the city. I know there's a lot of infrastructure issues, infrastructures are getting old. But, you know, this is something that if we could really partner and instead of pointing fingers and saying, well, it's your guys, it's, well, it's your guys. If we could find a way to work together just to benefit these people over here that have really invested in our community, have really invested in the county, just to have something where they can say, hey, there is something on the table. There is something being worked with, and we're going to try to make something happen. I think that would be something really awesome for not only this Hamilton County, but the city of Norwood as well.
So, thank you. I'm going to add, Holly Christman is on the call, and she leads up a lot of our work with MSD. And we happen to have had a hearing earlier today related to MSD, not your specific issue, but their budget. And so Holly, I'm wondering if we can reach out to MSD, put this on their radar. And gentlemen, we've got a meeting in January to talk about some specific issues throughout the county. And I think it might be a good opportunity to talk about this, make sure MSD knows that that conversation is going to take place so that they are prepared to respond. But I think, you know, we're happy to try to help. And maybe, you know, we do it in the context of a hearing in January that's already been scheduled.
Yeah, I, sorry.
Go ahead, Holly.
Thank you. We were aware of this comment, and I know Karen Ball from our team has been talking with MSD about this. So we'll be sure to continue that conversation and communicate with MSD as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, so we didn't schedule that, the date for the meeting in January, to my knowledge, right?
We have not.
Yeah, so it's going to be a staff meeting, which is a rather informal setting for us where we can have a bit of a dialogue regarding these kinds of projects. So we will get your contact information, make sure you're aware of it, and invite you into that forum where we can specifically talk about this with MSD.
That's great.
Mr. Kelch again here. I would really appreciate that, and I thank you for hearing us out here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. And Mrs. Drehouse, I wanted to mention, too, that I believe your sister-in-law was my Spanish teacher growing up, so thank you so much.
Oh, boy, keep it all to yourself.
Take care and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that seems to conclude our public comments. Okay, all right, well, very good. Again, thank you all. Commissioners, I'm going to open up the floor for comments, but I just want to say thank you to those of you that took the time to participate. We've heard about the need for more funding for human services, especially related to some of the priorities that have already been set out by the commission over the last couple of years. So thank you for participating and bringing it to our attention again.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no comments. I'll hold my comments for our next time that we talk about passing, passing or not passing the budget. I'm very excited about the budget for several reasons, and I'll talk about that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will as well, but thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, well, thank you all again for joining. Thanks to staff for being on, and we will take this up next week. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Night.
Oh, you want to adjourn your meeting?
We need to adjourn, don't we?
Denise is out.
That's okay. The two of you can do it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? I'm sorry. Commissioner Samardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Denise, Denise, yeah.
Thanks. There she is. I know.
It's okay.
Hear me, Jackie. I'm like, oh, no! I apologize. I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Yeah, we already adjourned.
Well, you just concluded the hearing. You can do this now.
All right.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah.
Commissioner Samardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
All right, thanks, sorry.
Thanks.